I think, just as a final statement, because I'm sure there are citizens who do want to speak, that we believe that Ms. Winther was fired illegally. And the actions of these board members have destroyed the livelihood of a woman who gave the last nine years to the city of Logan, who wants nothing more than to be reinstated to her position so she can work for the citizens of Logan. And again, so we are here asking for that. This has been very, very hard on Angela. I know it's hard for her to break down and let you guys know that, but because your actions were illegal, you do have the opportunity here to do the right thing and put her back to work. Thank you.
In the public, I would like to make a comment. Yes, according to determinations. Everybody could, you know, I know a lot of people might want to speak, so we want to keep it pretty short, you know, a couple minutes.
Jamelle went to a wonderful one. Nick, at the last council meeting, Bill DeWitt asked you to find insubordination, and then he asked you, who did you answer to? And you said the citizens of Logan, did you not? Okay. Do the other council members agree that you answered to the citizens of Logan at all? Would you agree with that, Mike?
Yes.
You would agree with that? At the last meeting, we asked you to consult with the city attorney prior to this meeting, so you were prepared to answer questions. Did any of those three contact you prior to this meeting?
I certainly am.
I'll take that as a no. And I hold the three of you insubordinate. Blake, you've been insubordinate to this city time and time and time again repeatedly, repeatedly. So will you remove yourselves? That's my question.
Were you able to take a response?
Oh, I'm glad they take it. The first one in a long time.
I did provide paperwork and met with attorney.
Prior.
Prior to this meeting.
Then why did you have to tell them you had to consult with them?
Because of his time schedule and his ability to prepare for this.
Danny and Mike, have any of you guys heard anything that you would consider insubordinations and grounds for dismissal tonight?
The reason why I'm not going to give any opinions or answer any questions is very clear. The city's treasury is at stake if there's a claim for illegality here and it's not reversed. So I'm begging for a few more opportunities to research these delicate questions to advise the council so that they don't make an error. I've had 48.
Welcome to talk.
I've had 48 hours to prepare. This has been going on since last night. Thank you for consideration and your patience.
Skip, you were on the police committee, correct? How many police committee meetings did you attend? How many agendas did you post? So how many illegal meetings have you attended? They're all illegal if you did not post an agenda form, according to what you're trying to hold the park board and all the other. All the city council, all the city committees technically have to have agendas. So everyone you attended was an illegal meeting.
Jim, in his defense, we just learned at our training in June that the committees were supposed to also be keeping minutes and posting agendas and having them as open meetings.
I understand that you just learned that, but that's part of the grounds he's using for firing you. That's the point I'm making.
I'm experienced these times. Need to be on the termination issue. You know, we all have citizens' questions and comments at the end, and we can add a lot more of those at that time if you prefer.
Many of the very old-timey athletes here since 1964. I just want to, I have two questions concerning the two emails that were sent, and that seems to be Councilman Johnson's big issue. Councilman Johnson, the first question I have in relation to the first email, by what authority did you call the newspaper and cancel the publication of the minutes? By what authority? Did you, that's what I understood you did.
As a council member.
As a council member? Did the council give you that authority?
I was elected.
Now, a councilman's authority is in this meeting. I was a school board member for 16 years. We closed Magnoy. We tore down a building. We built a new one. I never acted independently outside of the council, the board of directors. I don't think you had the authority. Secondly, both emails, I practiced as an attorney for a long time. Many, many cities were my clients. And the only way an attorney can represent their client is to know what's going on. And those emails to me, you might not like what's a couple of those things said, but that was information that the attorney had to have about what's going on. Is there illegality is going on in the city council? She's got to tell them what's going on. Or the you, anybody is doing something wrong. That's Angela's job, to report to the attorney and go through what's going on. I think that was just information any attorney would have to know. And that might get a little irritated. I don't blame them. But I do think you did not have the authority to cancel the publication of minutes without the full council saying no. But they haven't, you have a chance to approve them and amend them at the next meeting. Thank you.
I've grown up here most of my life. I want to address the fact of the special meeting that was called to vote on the termination. I have three emails here that are required to call a special meeting. First one is from Skip Johnson, sent Thursday, July the 5th at 3:58 PM. And it says, "To the office of city clerk, I am scheduling a special session of the Logan City Council for Friday, July 6, 2012 at 7:00 PM to take place at City Hall, 108 West Fourth Street, Logan, Iowa. The subject of this meeting is the termination of Angela Winther as city administrator and the termination of Joe Laurock as the city of Logan attorney. I will create and post agenda for this meeting. I will post it at the usual locations prior to the 24-hour requirement." Now, take special note, sent at 3:58 PM, and he's already scheduling a special session. Second email is from Nicola Feber, and it's sent Thursday, July the 5th at 4:32 PM. Per city ordinance, Chapter 1704, "I would like to request a special meeting with the agenda previously provided by Councilman Johnson. Please consider this my written request." So let's see, the two of you already knew what you were going to talk about. Okay. 4:32 PM. The third email is from Dolores Clark, Friday, July 6th at 6:12 PM, 38 minutes before the meeting was to be held. And all it is, is a foreword of Skip's previous email. And it says, "I also agree to have a special session of the Logan City Council Friday, July 6th at 7:00 PM." Dee Clark. Okay? Ordinances and state code require that a majority have to request the special meeting, and they have to be done 24 hours before the meeting occurs. These emails prove that that meeting was illegal, and it violated the open meetings law for anything, any discussion, any votes taken were in violation of the open meetings law of the state of Iowa.
I was fired for speaking out and stating the concerns that the citizens had. I was fired because my opinion of Milliman Park differs greatly from yours. I see it as a park to be used by the community. You saw it as a park to be used by you. And you know that.
It wasn't about the park. Your termination wasn't about the park. And it wasn't about me. It was about your behavior and the actions you took, and what you wrote, and how you acted. And obviously, you took it all very personally. I needed to bend to yours.
Really? You're going with that?
He waited too much to hear the last word.
Do you have any idea, Councilmember Johnson, what you have done to me, to my family, to my reputation? Do you think that these friends you have do not report back to me the lies that you have spread about me? Do you think that people don't know where this is all coming from? Who the main crux that runs this council comes from? Do you think we don't know that?
The same person that bought off the other council members?
Yeah.
That speaks for them because they don't have a mind of their own?
Yes.
Who was texting information to them?
Yes.
She's asked the question to me. It's my turn to talk. If you could please be quiet, I'd appreciate it.
It is very obvious. It is very obvious to me, as to the citizens, who controls the city council of Logan right now. It is not the mayor.
And did you feel, you felt threatened?
We all felt threatened. Yes. We were screamed at at council meetings.
Because the council member comes in and asks questions?
No.
And asks why things are being done?
We were told we were doing everything wrong. There was suddenly, after four years of being on the council, Skip, you suddenly questioned everything I did. Suddenly, after March 12th. You suddenly questioned every action of our park board members. You started questioning, or your wives did, every action of pool board members. You started questioning.
Were they not illegal meetings that were being taking place that you were attending?
We did not know.
Did we have bad practices in place? Were we violating sunshine laws?
Was Dee not involved in those meetings?
Exactly.
Dee, were you on, were you on the park board?
Hold on, you'll be able to ask your question.
The difference is, they owned up to their mistakes. They corrected them. They did not know they were supposed to be posting agenda for their meetings. Okay? Pretty minor infraction when you consider that the boards in Logan do not have the power to spend money without council approval. They do not have the power, the park board, to do anything really, other than maybe waters some flowers, without the permission of the council. So what was it they were going to pull over the citizens' eyes by not posting an agenda? Since they had one, two meetings a year.
You tell me, you tell me, why would these meetings care from us? Why were they so?
That would be a good question for Dee. She was on the park board for over 20 years, and they never posted an agenda, that I'm aware of, the entire time she was on the board. Did you intend, when you were on the board, to hide things from the citizens of Logan?
No, not at all.
So whose responsibility is it to make sure those happen?
Yours.
Right now, this is the public hearing, insubordination and her firing, rather than going off on all these other items. And if they come up getting citizens' questions and comments, then that's fine.
I would just like to make a statement, Randy, that many of those items do directly correlate.
Sorry, the question, the topic needs to stick to the termination instead of going off on all this, the other issues, because the issue of the termination with these emails.
This is the question she's asked.
Right. And if she wants to ask more of citizens' questions, probably as she can, but right now, the public hearing should be for the termination, so that's what we should keep it toward.
My statement was just that a lot of those items that happened led to my frustration and my belief that we had gone afoul in our city government. And therefore, I was sharing that with the only people, you and the city attorney, that I felt could help us resolve this. I didn't know where else to turn.
My name is Milo Burnett. I live on Skyline Drive. My wife Marilyn and I moved to Logan. My wife is a third-generation member of this community, and she wanted to come back here to retire. We've been here almost nine years. I was happy to come to Logan to live. I came out of the Sioux City area and spent 35 years as a teacher, mostly in Sioux City, 30 years in Sioux City. And I was glad to get out of the larger city and to move to a smaller community. I've been happy being here until tonight. And Dee, you and I have known each other through the vet's office, and to hear you accused of telling the city administrator to shut up in a public meeting is alarming to me. I just simply want to say about all of this, you brought shame on this community. I'll pay you. And unless this woman is rehired, which is your rightful duty, this shame will not go away anytime soon. I'm sorry that this all happened. I'm sorry that some of you have your own personal agendas when you come to city council meetings. And the comment about texting back and forth with each other and giggling is very unbecoming of members of a city council to conduct that kind of business in a city council meeting. I don't plan to move away from Logan. I hope you will do the right thing and get this thing resolved in the right way.
Hi, I'm Kim Armstrong. I also live on Skyline Drive. I've lived in Logan since 2001, followed my in-laws up here, and have loved this community. It's been a great community to raise my children in. I also don't plan on leaving anytime soon. I'm going to apologize, because this is not my forte. I like to, I love public speaking, but I like to prepare for this, but I am so livid that I am doing this unprepared, so I am going to be very inarticulate. And please correct me if this isn't related to the termination, but it's my perception. I first want to say that I have had an opportunity to work with Angela. I worked with her as she worked tirelessly to raise money for building this incredible pool that we have in our community. She sought out advice of someone who works for a foundation, and I thought that was really smart of her to reach out. I also am very thankful that she advocated for a swim team to make this community an even better place to raise kids. And have been pretty distant, but I think it's pretty incredible that she was also advocating on behalf of reinvigorating a park that has been forgotten for a very long time. The question that I have to start off with is related to, I'll give you my background. I'm very well-versed in nonprofit and Robert's Rules of Order. And so I'm just curious, you mentioned that conflict of interest was a topic in one of the emails. So my question to you is related to, what is your perception of a conflict of interest? Because I've been at a council meeting where you voted on something related to Milliman Park, and conflict of interest is always about perception. It's about the perception of the benefit. And you also mentioned rumors in the community. And the rumors in the community that I've heard is that you fought Milliman Park because of a perception that you were receiving some sort of benefit, that you did not agree with that. So my question is, what is your perception of a conflict of interest? And why have you not abstained from voting when we've had this on the table? Can you read this?
Is this related to the termination of the?
Well, you had mentioned that as a part of the emails that she had sent related to conflict of interest. So this really was just a follow-up, that she had sent emails to the city attorney related to a conflict of interest. And so my question to you is, my perception of a conflict of interest is you have had a conflict of interest throughout this entire thing in voting for anything related to Milliman Park. You should have abstained from voting for anything. So I guess, my question is, what is your perception of a conflict of interest? Because you've mentioned it as a part of the email. So maybe if you could explain to me what that is.
There's several components of your, of your design.
Yes.
Several components that you talked about first, that these rumors are going around that I was against the park. This has been a continued perpetuation of this lie that we are against the park, that I am personally against the park. There's no vote where I've voted against the park.
You may have wanted to abstain, though. You share a property line with that park, correct?
With the road that aligns that one correctly.
Okay. So my question is, should you not abstain from those votes?
That's a great question. And that question appeared to have been asked to our attorney, which then, any opinion that he shared or was given to those that contacted him, never came back to us.
Okay. Well, then, related really quickly to the termination, are you concerned with the fact that Angela is technically a protected class? She's a female. And so are you concerned that your actions have not only devastated her career, but have put the city of Logan at risk for litigation, for wrongful termination as a protected class?
My name is Linda Francis. I live 509 North Second Avenue. I believe that you, as a city council, are elected to represent the citizens of this community. The citizens that sit in this room, I have now heard your information that you claim is insubordination. I say that you should have followed the city employee handbook. You should have gone into executive session. You should have discussed it. You should have come back in, then taken a vote to whether you should have dismissed Angela Winther. You should not have some way clandestinely discussed it so that she, that you could just come in and say, "She's fired." Then you should have followed the city rule handbook and possibly reprimanded her, fined her, given her some days off, not fired her. I suggest that you make a motion, that you second the motion, and that you then affirm the motion to reinstate Angela Winther as our city clerk. Thank you.
Everybody knows I'm not a public speaker, and my shake, I apologize. Renee Springston, I live 105 West Fourth Street. My questions that pertain to the termination, why were council members from and mayors that are left out of the loop during the termination discussions? Why do they still, until today, did not know any information? I guess that kind of bothers me. And my other one, I guess, is to you. Welcome. Yay. I look forward to the information exchange via your emails and your little notes when I finally, 45 days later and counting, get my information that I requested.
Is there anyone else who'd like to comment?
My name is Judy Binkle, and I don't like to do this, but here I am. First of all, I realize Angela's frustration, and sometimes when you get so frustrated and beat down, you kind of have to do something to keep things moving. And I understand her frustration. Also, what it brought up about the letter and the training, I know Dee didn't attend the meeting or the training, but I said you did. But at that next meeting, I remember a letter that was read at the council meeting that said you needed to go to the training and then write to the people who had sent the letter about how this was going to improve. I don't know about anybody else, but I did never hear anything. And I know that was read at the meeting, because that's where I heard it.
I just want to say that I believe I know Angela probably as well as anyone. She worked with me for eight years, and, you know, she's always honest and helpful to the public, and, you know, she just doesn't deserve this. And I know that she was frustrated because she called me so many times, thinking, "Why are they doing this? This is not the way you're supposed to do it. Isn't that right, Petra?" And I would say, "Yeah." And I says, "Maybe they hadn't had formal training, but Skip and Dee and you," I told many times, "How if you have three or more together at the quorum, and it's illegal?" And so I just want you to know that I believe that Angela should be reinstated too.
I've been away. So here I am. I have a different hook on all this, because I haven't been to the meetings. I have heard many things. I have family that have been pained by this. I know friends, and I know that goes on both sides. This town, I've talked to Charlene Key, and she's so sad that this is going on in this town. And I feel, I've been here 60 years, and this isn't the way Logan is. And that's why I feel bad. I feel bad for Dolores. I feel bad for Samantha. The pain that everybody's going through over what? You know, it is time for everybody to heal and get over this. Do the right thing. Let's move on. This isn't a war. You know, this is a small event. And so why are we all spending so much time and energy when the world has so many other crises that we should be dealing with, not this? Let's put it to bed.
My name is Jim Schultz, and I'd just like to say to Mr. Johnson, thank you so much for finally talking tonight. The community's been waiting for that since the 40th of July, and share your side of the story.
I would just like to thank everybody coming out tonight and for your comments. Jim, I never did get a chance to answer your question. I personally, what I've heard tonight, doesn't appear to me that the city had sufficient grounds to terminate Angela. And I would agree as well that I don't feel she was terminated in a legal meeting. Under those circumstances, I request we call a special meeting. We go into closed session. We get all the details and facts out on the table. We consider Angela's comments tonight, and we discuss reinstatement and possible litigation.
Come on, Nick. You can do it. Come on. Do the right thing. Come on, bud.
Would this be a meeting I would be included in or not?
Close session.
Okay.
So I have the motion to put this as a special meeting. And second, are there any questions or comments for discussion?
Are there any questions or comments for discussion?
Are we able to make the motion? Is there some time for questions?
Do we, do we get a public hearing first? Right, okay.
Sorry, I'm a little rusty.
I make a motion, we adjourn a public hearing.
I'll second it.
No, this is just to adj, just to adjourn the public hearing, not, and I won't go on to everything else. I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Feber?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowe?
Aye.
Our public hearing portion of this is adjourned.
Mayor Feder, under the circumstances, I request we call a special meeting and go into a closed session to get all the details and facts out on the table, consider Angela's comments tonight, and discuss reinstatement and possible litigation.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Feber?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Do we have a date for this proposed?
No, it won't be right now. Once this is done, we'll set a date.
Aye.
Councilmember Vowles?
Aye.
Councilmember Crowe?
Aye.
We're going to hear the votes back here.
All ayes. Terry, what works good for you is Thursday night, with Thursday night work. Thursday night at 7:00 PM. I will, we'll put the agenda out. We can get the agenda out tomorrow. Just Thursday night work. Monday night?
Yeah. What's Monday week?
Next Monday we're field. Okay. We'll set the date of Monday, 27th, as a sure, city council members go into closed session to discuss Angela's requests. For 27th at 7:00 PM.
How does the public know if it brings out to your meeting?
It's my understanding, again, I'm a little rusty for a couple, three years here, but it's my understanding, no decisions can be reached in a, in a closed session. We would come out of closed, and then what we'd do is, we would have to put on an agenda for the next regular council meeting, whatever actions we wanted to vote on and discuss.